Okay, this opens up. The Board of Supervisors meeting for September fourteenth, so please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're plenty of allegiance to the flag for the United States of America. We should say, organization. Is there a motion to the approval of the agenda?
Oh, okay, second.
Any comments or questions on favor? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-fourth?
No.
Comments, questions, all in favor? Pat, can we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, immediately before the meeting this evening, the board discussed some real estate litigation and legal matters, no decisions were made.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any items that are not on the agenda? Any public comment on anything not on the agenda tonight? And that brings us to announcements, committee and department reports. Does anyone on the Board of Supervisors have any announcements? Well, first, let me ask for a consent. Agenda motion to accept the committee and department reports, is there a motion? There a second?
Sure.
Any comments or questions, all in favor? Okay, so the committee and department reports are available on the side table tonight, and as always, they are included with the minutes. Just a few highlights from that, Mike, I think you have an event coming up on the twenty-third.
Yeah, we have that picture on twenty-third.
So if anybody wanted to volunteer?
Contact Christopher, he'll show up, AFAC on the twenty-third here.
On sides with the. Pick up the Poconos, so that's our township litter pickup program. Mark, I think you have a golf tournament at the end of the month. Are there any open slots? What should people do if they want to support the fire department? September's exhibit is up at the Community and Cultural Center, it's a. Artist that has been there before, Tricia Lippert, in her art exhibit of opening up painting, the interactive kiosk. Is up and in test mode, so feel free to go on over and take a look at. The interactive kiosk at the community center. Provided by a grant from the Poconos Mountain Business Bureau. And that's it, I think, for announcements and committee and department reports unless. There's anything you want to point out. Okay, moving on, Michelle, any correspondence?
A letter was received from Ronnie Watershed, thanking the township for renewing the conservation partnership. The conservation partnership helps to underwrite the science-based clean water mission of the Bronin Watershed Association.
That brings us to the treasurer's report.
A motion from our general count, eighty-six thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and sixty-four cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our sewer count, one hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our golf count, nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-six cents.
Comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion from our liquor field count, forty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
Motion from our cable franchise, forty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents.
Any comments or questions, all in favor?
I just want to bring up, you know, that we are hearing and we know. That cable franchise taxes dropping significantly year over year. Case in point is. You know, what we give to our fire and EMS providers goes down. Because it's been past practice to only give. To the fire and EMS what we collect from cable franchise, which. I don't believe. Our emergency services should rely only on whatever tax brings in. I mean, they have to create budgets and live by budgets as much as we do. But it, again, over, I would say, four years. It, the cable tax has probably been. Diminished by over forty, almost fifty percent. So, I mean, it'd be my recommendation that the board. Look at. What the balance has been over the last forty years and try to make. An increased donation to our fire and EMS. To at least. Get closer to what was collected years ago or given out years ago. So I'll take any question.
I don't think, I don't think you want to include EMS with that because that's just been a standard. Amount, yeah. That hasn't decreased. It's the same amount we get quarterly to them every time.
Correct.
The fire departments that we give it.
Right, right.
Sliding scale now.
We don't only provide the cable franchise fee, if someone needs the jaws of life, we provide that, if somebody wants a heat-seeking camera. We provide that. We go beyond, above and beyond the cable franchise.
Agreed, period, that's correct.
So.
But it doesn't, it doesn't match what. You know, the funds were in prior year.
Yes.
I don't think we should be relying. On what we collect, I, I think that, you know, we don't have any vendor. That relies. On what they bill us based on how much earning income tax we collect. Their bills, their bill. I mean, so.
Well, that is why we are looking at a fire tax and an EMS tax, that has been increasing the local services tax. And that is why we've always provided more than just the cable franchise fee.
It's not always, I mean.
Will we pay for insurances, no? We pay parking lots, we do, we do a lot more than just the cable franchise fee, I understand what you're saying. And I don't think the intent was ever to rely just on the cable franchise fee, or we would not have given beyond that.
Okay, well, I, again, I think it's. We can look at it in its entirety, and I think it's gone down significantly year over year, I, I don't think. I think that's bad progress.
Agreed, and I think that's why we commissioned this study, and that's why we talked last year about doing a fire and EMS tax for two thousand and twenty-three. But it didn't happen in two thousand and twenty-three, and we're still considering that for two thousand and twenty-four.
And again, I think two thousand and twenty-three shouldn't just be dismissed away, something that may or may not happen.
I think we, in two thousand and twenty-three, we've given above and beyond the cable franchise fee to just about everybody on this list, except for suburban. So.
Well, I'll, I'll work the numbers, I'll talk to Bonnie, and I'll, I'll report back at the next meeting, and we can see where we sit. But again, I, I don't think it's reasonable.
I think we're all in agreement with that, which is why we've been giving more than the cable franchise fee.
We're all in agreement.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, solicitor's report.
Thank you, the first item under my report is the Mount Nebo Apartments Phase Two, Phase Two Conditional Use Decision. If you recall, you had a conditional use hearing for Phase Two of Mount Nebo Apartments, probably two meetings ago. So this is the written decision, conditionally approving the proposed addition to the Mount Nebo Apartments. Specifically, they're proposing the addition of. It's one building, one additional building for an additional thirty apartment complex dwellings. It will include consolidating. The property. Parcel ID number zero-nine dot nine dot two dot two-two with the existing approximately thirty-eight acre site, or. The existing parcel that currently has the apartments on it. So, this is the written decision, it's, there's a number of conditions in it, I don't know if you want to go through it. In detail, but it's a conditional use decision approving the Mount Nebo Apartments Phase Two Conditional Use Application. Are there any questions from the board? And a lot of the conditions were. From the, from the. Original conditional use decision were incorporated into this Phase Two decision as well, as well as some additional conditions that were discussed. And considered at the, at the hearing a few weeks ago. So if there's no questions or comments from the Board or the public, you could entertain a, a motion to approve. The conditional use application decision for Mount Nebo Apartments LLC.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Thank you. The next item. Under my report is the proposed solar energy ordinance, if the board recalls, I drafted a draft zoning ordinance amendment. Probably a couple meetings ago, there were some comments about the accessory use and that the existing zoning ordinance already accounts for the accessory use. So it was then thereafter revised a little bit more, we cut out the references from the accessory use. Modified it for the existing provisions in the zoning ordinance, but we did include the provisions for. The commercial solar use, which is more of the solar farm type use. And it has been forwarded to the Monroe County Planning Commission, you did receive comments from the Monroe County Planning Commission. It's my understanding the board may be inclined to consider and incorporate some of those comments from the planning commission from the county. Did you want to go through those? What we have is a September eighth, two thousand and twenty-three review letter from Monroe County Planning Commission. I don't know if you want to go through it in detail, or if you just want to give me guidance, it's the which of the comments and reviewed comments that you wanted me to try and incorporate into your zoning amendment for the solar use. So, if you're looking at the September eighth, two thousand and twenty-three county PC review letter, the first. Well, the second comment, now the first one is just a general statement, but the second comment discusses while the industrial district is generally located. Along electrical transmission lines and near substations, the northwestern portion of the district includes areas located over a mile, over a half mile. From transmission lines and the viability of commercial solar facility located at such a distance as unknown, I think, again, that's just a statement.
I don't think there's anything to do with that, I don't think it matters.
The third one, they're suggesting that you consider specifically prohibiting solar arrays. From being located in sensitive natural areas such as wetlands, watercourses, so on and so forth.
I would, I agree with that.
Board want to incorporate a provision addressing that in the ordinance?
Sure.
Number four, it is recommended that the township include standards limiting the amount of mature trees that may be removed for these solar commercial facilities.
I agree with that.
That would be this guidance, I don't know, that would, that would be a condition, or.
I understand what you're saying, Mike, but in order for that to be a condition in a conditional use hearing, we have, I think we would have to go out to the property. I think if you just include, if you included a standard, like you can only remove so many mature trees per. Acreage of a certain panifrost.
Right, you would have that standard.
We don't have that, we could look up what other standards others have done and come up with a standard.
Well, it's, it's not going to be how many trees you still move for solar.
No, it's how many, how many.
Did they find the next lot and level that? To get that. The sun and the.
I don't understand, on the property they.
No, this is a.
I'm, I'm saying that property, that you're gonna, you're gonna level up certain amount of trees.
Correct, correct.
And if you don't get the angle to the sun you need, you may have to move. More trees to the south, remove more trees to the south.
This is, right, but the difference is, this is talking about mature trees, so do you want to? Do you want to protect something that's a hundred years old, or seventy-five years old, or a certain diameter? So that they have to leave it and go around it?
And you're not going to go to solar farm, if you're going to say there's a hundred-year-old tree, and go up with the, you can't have that.
Yeah, how would you put the?
Eliminated that part.
You wouldn't eliminate the entire parcel, you might eliminate a half acre. Out of that, there might be a cutout. I, I think allowing for clear cutting is not a great idea.
It, it may not be a great idea in normal buildings, but a solar farm, not somewhere where. Right. I've never seen one with trees in the middle of it.
Correct.
There might be, well, there might be on the edges, they might, they might have to eliminate.
Okay, so then I think we have to look at the hides on and see what land is available, because all of a sudden, we're going to pigeon hole ourselves into a spot where. These trees are a hundred years old on this lot. This lot is more than a half a mile away, and all of a sudden, we only have twelve acres.
That's the current industrial zone, if a future board creates an additional industrial zone, or if we expand the industrial term, I would incorporate something else. And if you have, and that's what this is saying, you want to create, standard could be something along the edge. And then they would have, they would have to have a bigger step back on the edge that's between them and a residential district.
I, I don't see how you can create this.
Well, what if? So, I'm looking, if you look at number five. Currently, I believe the way it reads is that the county planning commission is proposing that the amendment. State that the solar panels are to be considered, or it's saying, the, the proposed ordinance as it reads is saying that the solar panels are pervious. And the county is recommending that this be reconsidered as depending upon the model type, so on and so forth, that it might be impervious. If, if solar panel panels are considered impervious, and you require them to comply with the impervious. Surface restrictions of the zoning ordinance for that district, that might indirectly address what the concern is with the clear cutting.
It depends on the model of panels. Or array that they're choosing. So what I'm hearing from the board is that on number four, you're saying leave it as part of the conditional use, as a condition, instead of trying to create a standard.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Because you don't have to have.
Standard, because you, you know, I want to put a solar farm in industrial, and those people, okay, now I'm going to go out to the parcel that I want, I'm considering. I got a flight of trees that are more than twelve inches in diameter, oh, sorry, can't buy this lot.
Correct.
Got to look for another lot. Don't, don't think it's.
Okay, so in, in number five, it depends on the type of panel?
Well.
Or array.
Right, but if we're going to. It's going to be hard to allow that to be. Flexible at the time of conditional use, if in the ordinance we're calling impervious. We'll have to address the language somewhat if you want to make that. If you want to change that from pervious to, to allowing it to be considered either pervious or impervious depending upon the type and model.
Well, how it's becoming impervious, the water is going to roll off of it.
Right.
And it's going to go to pervious coverage.
Well, right now, it is, right now, it, right now, the, the way the ordinance reads, it reads that it is pervious. The, the county is suggesting that we consider, that you consider reconsider that provision.
So the board wants to see examples of a solar array that would be impervious, because you're thinking of only the flat panels. On a ground array.
I'm not thinking about that. Any kind of a dish or anything?
Well, actually, you know what, I'm looking more. So I'm reading the county's comment. And it's not entirely, if you look at the ordinance. The draft ordinance, I'm going to read you the, the draft ordinance, impervious coverage. The area beneath the ground mounted PSES, which is the. The solar energy facility is considered pervious cover. However, use of impervious construction materials under the system could cause the area to be considered impervious. And subject to the impervious service limitations for the applicable zoning district. And then it goes on to say gravel of paved access roads servicing the, the system shall be considered, so the way the ordinance read actually already accounts for. Whether it's pervious or impervious, so if you have these arrays and they're installed along, above grass.
Right.
That's going to be pervious. And that's the way this currently reads, however, if the impervious, if there is impervious construction. Under the system like macadam or concrete. It will be considered impervious, so actually, the zoning ordinance provision, the draft that was. Put together already accounts for the ability for it to be depending upon the type and, and construction, so I'm not sure what the county. Unless they're saying some panels are not pervious, which I'm not aware of.
To say that it's pervious because water rolls off of it is to say a roof is also. Pervious because water runs off of it, yet we have to create. A plan for stormwater for that. So. Solar panels, roads and gravel surfaces are considered impervious surfaces. But they require that a certain volume of stormwater from impervious surfaces. Must be treated prior to runoff, solar panels are considered a disconnected impervious surface when water running off a panel is discharged to a pervious surface. Like turf, rock with perennial vegetation.
Basically, it doesn't change the underlying. Condition, is what we're saying. If it's underlying by pervious, then it's pervious. If it's underlying by impervious, it's impervious, correct?
Yeah, I think the way to read the, the ordinance, the draft ordinance reads is okay.
It already does it.
I, I think it already does it, I'm not sure what they're referring to. Because if you, especially. That subsection D one. The area beneath the ground mounted system is considered pervious cover, which if it's grass, sure, that makes sense.
Right.
However, the use of impervious construction materials under the system could cause the area to be considered impervious. And subject to the impervious surfaces limitations for the applicable zoning district. So I think that, I think that addresses it.
Right.
So do we want to talk more about five, or do you want to?
No.
Move on?
Move on.
Okay, so five, similar to number four, you're going to let go?
Yeah.
Okay. Six, it is recommended that required vegetation screening provide year-round buffering. That is performance guaranteed with a maintenance agreement for a reasonable period of time. Any comments on that?
What is the purpose of that?
That I don't know. This is from the county. I'm, I'm assuming they wanted the. Solar farm to be screened.
Year-round, like. With that it evergreens instead of deciduous.
So, if you look at the ordinance as drafted. Screening and vegetation. Street screening shall consist of slat fencing or shrubs six feet to eight feet high when mature. That shall be planted every fifteen feet of property budding the public right-of-way, shrubs shall be planted adjacent to or outside of the road right-of-way. And then residential buffer screenings may be slat fencing or a row of evergreen conifer.
Right, so I think all that they were saying was make sure it's evergreen and not. That's all.
Well, they ask for maintenance, they ask for maintenance.
I do not, there's nowhere in here that I have for a, a maintenance agreement. Associated with the screen. So that is a piece of the comment that if the board wants to pull up, we should probably add that they must make a payment.
Not build it in the, really, really, nobody does in there.
So add maintenance?
I would think so, right?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, you want to say twelve months, I mean. I think that would be reasonable, rather than. Just even open-ended.
Number seven, proposed amendment states that the township engineers to be responsible for determining the amount of the decommission, the de-commissioning bond. It is recommended that the estimates be submitted by the developer that are subject to review and approval. Be the township, and that the developer would be responsible for all associated legal, so on and so forth. So it looks like they're suggesting that the bond be approved by the township as opposed to the township engineer. I mean.
I think what, what we have is sufficient, but this is.
I'm sorry?
I think what we have is already sufficient, I mean, that's totally.
During the operation of the facility, a new engineer's estimate of cost for de-commissioning shall be submitted every ten years to the township upon. Approval of the estimated cost by the township's engineer, a revised surety shall be provided to the township in the amount of.
Yeah, I used all of these up until eleven.
Well, these are just FYI.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so you want to skip to eleven?
Yeah, I think seven, eight, nine, and ten are fine unless.
No, they're just FYI, there's nothing to add.
And eleven, we were talking about briefly, and. Mark and Mike, you think it's fine because it's an industrial zone.
Yeah.
So leave eleven not worried about. Doing anything, making any changes based on eleven?
No, and it is a conditional use that's me. I think the rest of it is fine.
Okay, well, I think I have enough guidance, what I'll do is I'll implement or incorporate a couple changes to address numbers three. And six. And a portion of six of the county review letter into the ordinance and recirculate for your consideration. The next item under my report is the status of the zoning ordinance amendment, as the board's aware, before my time. The township started looking at revising the. Zoning ordinance comprehensive zoning amendment, and. I've circulated two articles with some of my comments on the version of the zoning ordinance that was provided to me. Articles twelve and articles thirteen, I don't know if you want to go through them. In detail, or do you want me to just go through it quickly and call out a couple questions I asked before we move on? So article, article twelve, open space requirements. You, you see my slight track changes in comments, but there's not much. Unless the board has any questions or concerns with this one, this is specific to open space requirements throughout. Any questions or concerns? And then article thirteen is the miscellaneous performance standards and regulations. Subsection one thirty twenty D. This is where you have land with resource restrictions and resource protection land. This is where you have land with resource restrictions and resource protection land. Uh, you had, you provided for the hundred-year floodway, wetlands, slopes of twenty-five percent or more. Hundred-year floodplain, slopes of fifteen, twenty-five percent. And I just have a comment, do you wanna? Was there any other consideration of ax soils or woodlands, or do you wanna just leave it as is? Okay, as is. And then the other comment is. For the slopes of twenty-five percent or more. Currently. It's point seven, but the open space ratio is point seven five. And you're proposing to decrease that to point five. I just wanna make sure that that's what the board intended.
We need to do another question.
I'm just curious, why does the board not want to consider adding agricultural soils or woodlands as resources? To be protected?
What is the?
Instead of wetlands, I mean, we have wetlands um, and slopes.
I don't think it's. Let's say I'm open and did it because we don't have. Uh. A zoning officer to discuss everything.
Oh, okay, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I have Mark and I have Kevin and Sean. If his feelings.
That's fine.
Uh, so we'll check and come back to it.
All right, so if you wanna flip to section one thirty dash forty. The height. Uh, restrictions.
I agree, it should be.
What's that?
I agree with your comment.
Uh, for both where it says, do you wanna include residential dwellings on lots that are not residential zone?
Right.
Okay. Everyone understands the comment?
Hmm.
And everyone's okay making that change, or do you wanna kind of leave it open again like you did for the other one? Until the zoning officer has an option to comment?
If we have to comment, anyway, based on your.
Okay. In section. One thirty fifty. Subsection. F. This is where it talks about land from which TDRs have been sold, maybe used only for the following purposes. And then you talk about agriculture, nursery, uh, accessory retail sales of agricultural products. Preservation of natural landscape. And then this next one is a new addition. It's not in your current ordinance. Non-commercial outdoor public or homeowner association recreation areas. I just wanna make sure that the board's okay with that. These are um. Those are the restrictions as to what land.
So in a, in a. Community. Opens, this would be also considered as part of their open space.
Correct.
Yeah. That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
In fact. Um. I just mentioned in subsection one thirty sixty. Subsection D, when you're talking about traffic visibilities across corners. There was just a diagram that was removed, uh, the di, you know, the typical uh. Um, yeah, the truck. Yeah, uh, I don't know if there's an intent to keep that in or if it was intended to take it out. That was just a comment. Sometimes a diagram is worth a thousand words. Uh. I think that's, those are the big ones for this section. I don't know if the board had any questions or concerns. No?
You're okay with these right of ways with the chairman?
What, rarely.
Right, this time, well, I feel that we're past something down on.
Where?
One.
Oh, the future right of way subsection E.
One thirty dash eight thirty?
No, one thirty sixty.
E.
E.
Oh, one thirty dash two E?
Yeah, those, the, the future right of ways for streets and their future right of ways in existing streets. Those right of ways that the the length and feet or the width and feet is the same as currently in your ordinance. There's no changes being made. If you wanted to make changes, now would be a good time to say.
Exactly, if Mike's following, you need to make.
No.
Honestly, so I think we're.
Okay. That's helpful. So um. Those are the only articles that were, I decided to throw out here for tonight. The next piece of this is, given the fact that you've, it's um, it's been before my time, you've been trying to get this comprehensive zoning amendment done. Uh, it might be a good idea to. Uh, have these discussions with one or two articles at a time. At either your work sessions, at your regular meetings, at if you wanna consider special work sessions before your regular meetings. To try and get through the articles so we can package the zoning ordinance amendment. In a manner that's ready for consideration to be moved on, moved on, uh, at some point in our lifetime. Uh. So I, I'm not gonna suggest.
You can't change solicitors ever again.
I would suggest, I mean, you, you, you have your work sessions on Friday mornings. That's a possibility to maybe work through some of these articles. We have your regular meetings, we can always do, we can put it on agendas, uh, depending upon how much time you wanna spend on it at a regular meeting. Or if you wanted to consider scheduling special meetings or or work sessions before your regular meetings, uh, we can do that as well. That's really up to the board how you wanna kind of schedule to go through these. I leave it with you. And obviously, it'll depend upon me getting you. My comments on all the articles in a manner that's in advance of your whatever we have scheduled for when you wanna discuss it.
We already have a standing call with Pat. At Friday work sessions during the weeks. Where we don't have a board of supervisors meeting.
Hmm.
So it makes sense. To go over these then. What do you wanna add to get through this more quickly?
Well, I, I, I take my thoughts forward and do it at nine AM. Whether it's one or two, depending on how severe, these were softballs.
Hmm. I, I did that on purpose.
I think. Ready for this, uh, but if we, we do that handiwork at the nine o'clock call. Think that we can come back here. If not, the next Thursday night, when we have a meeting. And let the public, you know, for the like, we just sit down, the public.
Hmm.
These are the items.
And to be clear, your, your Friday work sessions are public meetings or?
Yep. So we could do the handiwork in the work session, have a red line that's blue lined. Or whatever, whatever you wanna call it, and then come back and discuss those topics in public.
Well, maybe both in public. They're both, one a regular meeting, one a.
One is at a regular meeting, so we don't have to worry about people saying we can't do daytimes.
Right, well, if you wanted to work your.
Comments at night.
If you wanted, if we wanted to work ourselves ahead, what we could do is make it every Friday at nine o'clock.
Well, remember.
And then we have two work sessions and a board of supervisors meeting.
Some of this depends upon how quickly I can turn around my comments on each article. Uh, granted, I already have a handful that I've done over the, you know, um. But uh. Yeah, I don't see. And it won't hold anything up, or we won't get tripped up with advertising if that's how we do it. Because then if I get you one or two articles for your one work session on whatever Friday. And we get through it, you can just put it on your agenda for the following regular meeting as well, uh, for just a follow-up kind of.
Yeah, because we'll be working on budgets on Friday soon.
Hmm.
So that was every other. It is the off week will be budgeting. The other week will be you.
Okay.
I was suggesting we do this nine o'clock every Friday, then there'll be some.
We have other things. Too much, too much to do, I mean.
All right.
I think every other is fine.
Okay, well, I think that, that gives me some guidance as to how you plan going, I'll be scheduling the discussions. So what I'll do, we got through these two pretty easy. I have a couple others. Uh, I'll circulate another one or two. Um, when I have them in a, a form that I'm ready and we'll get it on one of your work sessions for a Friday, maybe not next. When do you, you have it every Friday? So it won't be for tomorrow. Maybe, maybe next Friday, if not the following, for sure.
Don't you have a couple of articles that are already?
I do, I do, but those are.
We already discussed.
Hmm, we discussed one or two of them and then it kind of dropped off.
Okay.
Uh.
Those you're gonna find that.
Okay, if you're okay with that, some, some of those are pretty meaty, though. Those are substantive articles.
Take one.
Okay.
I'll keep track of the zoning office, so how we do it.
Okay, all right, good. I think we have a good game plan. I appreciate the conversation.
Right there.
Wow. Um.
Need a new whiteboard, Mike. Yeah.
Two other, two other, two other things that are not on my uh, agenda, but just kind of FYIs. I think it was touched on a little bit earlier this evening, uh, the board's been talking about uh, the LST tax. As the board's aware, you don't have an LST tax currently. Uh, you do have uh, the occupation tax.
Right.
Uh, so in the event that you, we move forward with the LST, the LST will, uh, you'll have to repeal the occupation tax because you can't have both. And you'll have the LST tax. Uh, what I'm, assuming the board's okay, I'll just continue to, I'll draft the ordinance. Now for the LST, the repeal of the occupation. And I'll circulate that at some point. We can discuss that in more detail on one of your future meetings if that's okay.
That would be great.
Okay.
Hmm.
And finally, again, just FYI. Uh, follow up, if you recall, and I believe they may be on the, I, I think they were gonna jump on the Zoom.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, DC.
DC Solar, that uh, David Perez is on Zoom.
Yeah, so. Um, the board may recall, it's been a, it's been a, may have actually. It's been a while. Uh, on your radar, but DC Solar. Uh, did. Secure a CoStarz contract, that CoStarz contract being uh, zero two eight dash E two three dash zero four six. And at one of your prior meetings, you conditionally authorized moving forward to finalize that agreement. And some of those conditions or concerns were related to uh. The, I'll say the engineering or the specs associated with the equipment and the structural. Ability of the building, the whole, whatever the equipment is, as well as confirmation on the uh, the, the two grants that you anticipate. Funding the project for or with. Um. So I'll just, I'll kind of bring that up, you know, they, they, they've gotten their, their, they have a CoStarz contract. At least to my understanding, uh, there's a, there's a written installation agreement with them. Township has not finalized it, finally uh, executed or approved it yet. I believe um. DC Solar has executed it. I believe they're on the call to answer any question the board may have. The only thing I'll say is again, uh, we, we, we really, or the township should really confirm somehow. That the equipment and the specs of the system and the structure of the building that they're gonna go on. Meshes well, it works right. Those words aren't the best engineering or technical terms, but you wanna make sure that it's, you're getting what you need and that what you. Get can be put or, or uh, installed on that building. And I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect. Uh. And then the other piece is, I talked to Michelle earlier. Just get confirmation from the two entities that are, that are funding it with the grant or anticipated to fund it through the grant. To get confirmation that this CoStarz contract, this CoStarz contractor is acceptable to them. And that they'll, that it is an eligible project and contract that they'll fund with those two grants. Those are the two items that are kind of not necessarily in my court, but I kind of keep bringing it up because I'm, I'm worried about it. I wanna make sure that the township is. Is uh, covered and does what they need to do, given the fact that this wasn't uh, something that we bit out because it's through CoStarz.
Hmm.
Uh, and I don't know if uh, DC Solar, I think they're on the call. I don't know if they have anything. Anything to comment on or any questions or concerns, or if the board has any questions or concerns. Uh, if, if DC Solar is on, I've been informed that uh. There have been discussions or at some point with an architect associated with the building where the equipment is going.
Yes, that's correct. Um, we have been working with an engineer that, um, obviously we would, once the contract is executed. That's when we would get engineering completely involved for the permitting process and all of that. Uh, we tried providing all the specs on the material that we are gonna be using. Um, that was submitted through CoStarz as well as uh. We sent it to you, Pat, as in an email as well. Um, and obviously, any other questions that you may have, we are able to answer. Um, as far as the engineering goes, we haven't gone fully to the extent of getting any plans in place as of yet, because we wanna make sure that we go about it in the way that you guys would prefer. And is acceptable to the township.
Is, is there a standard? As far as what the pound, where, how the manufacturer. Or the panels are manufactured and what, what those loads. Uh, add to the existing structure? Has that been reviewed with? Uh, the architect or engineer for the building?
Yeah, it's typically two pounds per square foot for the load and for the panels.
Didn't you guys have a conversation with Joe Sedler when we submitted the grant a few years ago?
Yes, we did.
And, and where are the man, where are these now manufactured?
I thought. I'm sorry, Dan.
No, I'll pull up the specs now, you, bear with me.
I thought the sheet you said, said Germany on the bottom.
Yes, one of, uh, the panels are from Germany. Um. Bear with me, I just wanna make sure that I give you guys the accurate information.
That those were the specs that I had emailed to the board. There was one for the panels and one for the inverters. So, hmm, and I think you had that attached. To also with received.
Yeah, part of, part of my piece to this, because it was uh, a little differently put together is in the commercial installation agreement. I had asked for specs and what was provided was uh. I think what we're marking as in the agreement as attachment, maybe three. Is uh, printouts from Solar Edge for the inverters.
Yes.
And. I thought there was another different, uh, Q cells.
Q cells, yes, those are the panels and they are manufactured in Germany.
And those is, those documents are what I was provided for an attachment. And those reported, I believe, to Sean McQuinn, uh, review as well.
Hmm. Um, I remember there was a question on insurances.
There, yeah, there was a, the contract had an insurance clause towards the end of the contract. And it referenced, I think it was sections one through six. Um, but there was, there was no description of the subsection one through six.
Yeah, I think that was the formatting pickup. I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily know if there were prior. At least in the version that I initially got, there were no prior subsections. Uh.
Yeah, I looked at it as well. I didn't find it either.
It, it does require, the, the requisite insurance that's being required is the commercial general liability insurance with the limits of. A million per occurrence to ag, general aggregate, to. A million per occurrence to ag, general aggregate, two products, operations aggregate and, and one million, uh, personal and advertised.
That's what I remember, that there was a question on the amount that should be put in for the insurances.
Yeah, and that was a formatting error, we apologize for that, we, we did catch it when it was brought to our, uh, well, now, we did catch it as we were reviewing after the fact. Um, and then we are, uh, we will be able to submit the certificate of insurance to you guys as well for that. Project.
Then one other, uh. What we're talking about is not necessarily insurance, but the performance bond, if, if the township gets to a point. Uh, where the township is comfortable with the, like I said, the specs, the structural issues and the grant funding, uh. The performance bond is a requirement, uh, and I think. Uh, we'll have to figure out what the amount is, it's, it's going to be, it'll probably be a hundred, almost certainly a hundred percent, uh, performance bond associated with the work. Unless the, unless the board wants to consider something different.
And, and the contract. Is, is all in US dollars, correct, there's no change for currency exchange?
Yeah, it's all US dollars, correct. Thank you.
Okay, so, like I said, I'm going to follow with Michelle and, and, and get something out to the, the entities that are providing the grants to get maybe more of a. A, uh. Better feeling from them, more confirmation from them, and then I'm not sure what the board wants to do, if, if you're satisfied with the. Equipment and the specs and the structural concerns, or if you wanted to. Look at that in more detail, that's, that's up to the township.
Well, I don't think there's any more detail we had at this point, I mean, we just have to rely on Sean and, and his review.
Subsequent to executing the agreement or before?
You know, what you do about it, I mean. You know, if something dramatically, you know, doesn't. You know, a big concern Sean or whatever, when he reviews it, that's one thing, but. I mean, to, to move forward, we had to sign a contract.
Right.
Do we, do we want to get back to Sedler with that two pounds per square foot, or is that something that Sean can? I think Sean can.
I think, I honestly think it's in my email from three years ago when we started this, but.
Well, I, I think.
And yeah, I think Sean can confirm it, but we already have that answer.
No, no, he's saying the additional two pounds per square foot.
That is exactly it, we. While we submitted for the grant, it was the additional pounds per square foot on top of the snow load and. We did that before we applied for the grant. So, uh, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, this is not a hard answer to get, because I believe we already have it.
Okay.
You know, so we should not, we should, yeah, and then Sean will confirm it.
Yeah.
And then, do you have, David, a list of references, I, I know you did Food Town Across the Street.
Yes, we do, we can, we can email that to you guys first thing in the morning, or this evening, actually.
And you, um, I think you did, did you do a school district, I remember?
We, yeah, we did, um, like Man- Manhattanville College in New York, uh, we've also worked at the, uh, municipality of Port Jervis. Um, we've just, so, done several projects, and again, we'll, we'll provide you with all those details in a reference sheet, so you guys can have it in front of you.
I think a sheet of references of folks we can call.
Yes, absolutely. We can send that right over.
Good.
Any other questions from anybody?
So I'll follow Michelle on, on that end, and then if, uh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Alright.
And that's all I have for tonight, unless there's something additional that the board has for me. Did I forget anything?
Well, there's no engineer, so no engineers report. Uh, no, nothing under new business. Um, under new business, the thing we've been waiting for all night.
I make a motion for point, Dr. Aaron Brown to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Comments or questions, all in favor? Well, congratulations, Dr. Brown, stand up and take a bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, make a motion to. Their municipal obligation for twenty ten Florida trophy MRS. One hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
I mean, I make a motion that we, uh. Offer some build up for Murphy Street Park. For Ellis Avenue.
You did a very nice job pressing that, Michelle, thank you very much, I appreciate your hard work. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Would you want to talk about what the grant is? Mike, for the record?
Uh, it's basically, um. To do with their buildings.
This is, and they are applying with Smithfield, isn't that correct?
With what?
Smithfield Township is doing. Their local services.
Right. An exhaust system. And, uh, equipment.
And the grant is in the amount of. Eight two thousand dollars, yeah, because it's.
There you are.
The air purifying system inside, so they don't have to breathe gas inside their garage. And they're able to. Launder their equipment and not have to take it home and use their own. You know, their gear, so they don't have to take it home and use their own. Equipment for things that are contaminated. You know, for it. So. Good job. Thank you, Michelle. Um, is there any public comment, anybody? Tell me where. Thank you, you're very welcome, we're very lucky to have. Is there any other public comments from anyone? No, anybody? How about you, David, anything?
No, I'm good on my end, thank you.
Alright, thank you, I'm sorry, Mike, what did I say? Alright, all in favor? Thank you for coming, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, David, congratulations.
Work with my, for you, uh.
See you later, Michael.